Open the meeting of the Halifax Planning Board. It's taking place here in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at 7:00 PM, August 22nd, 2024. Present in the meeting is Amy Trup, Tom Millius, Rick Mary, and myself, Robert Ganner. Just so everybody knows, make an announcement, the Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be reviewed on YouTube. Okay, we have our agenda preposted. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to accept the agenda for the August 22nd, 2024 Planning Board meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Passes unanimous.
I have a question.
Okay.
How was everybody informed about this meeting tonight?
It was posted.
Nobody get an email?
It was posted on the...
Did you get an email of an agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
You did? Okay, how come I didn't?
It was the same agenda as the 15th.
But I didn't even get notified about the cancellation. I had to find that out on my own from the town clerk's office. And this week, all the way up till 6:30 tonight, one member of your board, and you've obviously heard from Brendan Elliott, as we just discussed prior to the meeting, received some kind of notification about it, but I didn't. So that's funny. Surprised to see me?
No.
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 Well, that's not okay.
As a regular meeting on our normal...
The secretary is to email me any of the correspondence that comes in. She's supposed to email me about agendas. She's supposed to. And that is not okay, and it is now on record.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to our first one, our appointment. Continue for 24 SPR 246, 265 Mont Ponce Street, SPR JDE Civil. Understand that the Order of Conditions was signed by and approved by Conservation and given to Mr. Estridge to move forward with the Planning Board.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute. Want to repeat that again, please?
Well, it was posted by Conservation that they had signed off on the project for 265 Mont Ponce Street.
Border Health hasn't. And last night, they didn't approve it at all. And so what the problem is, is that 266 Mont Ponce Street is now has a different site plan in front of Conservation due to the fact that the Border Health had to change the plan. So the site plan has been changed, so 266 Mont Ponce Street should be coming back for a modification of site plan because it's not what we approved in early July. And I say that we need to wait for the Border Health because changes are going to need to be made again because neither 266 or 265 have been approved by the Border Health.
Have you met with Border Health?
So I think I'll take a 20,000-foot view of this to start with. So there is no coordinated permitting process in Halifax between the different boards. You have to go to each board one at a time, and each board has their different jurisdiction and their different, let's say, nuances and quirks and the like. So it's inevitable that you're going to have to cycle back to one board or another because somebody's got to go first. There's been a dynamic of boards saying, "Well, I'm not going to vote until they vote." And then that other board says the same thing. So it's a no set. So I, and particularly, so the topic in front of you is 265, not 266. That's a separate issue. So what's, we're speaking about 265. So the CONCOM has approved it under their jurisdiction.
Not only.
Could you please let him speak, please?
It's not true.
Thank you.
The Border Health, we were not heard, that was actually not on the agenda last night. It was 266, not 265. So again, separate project. It is quite possible that other boards will have comments that require us to come back. It is the nature of the beast in the way the permitting is structured here. And I will say it's almost guaranteed for 265 that we'll be back in front of you to modify this permit. And the reason is, we have but the senior center parcel. So when your select board comes in front of you with the application for the senior center, there's going to be coordination that's required. We're going to move utility services around and double check that our basin is sized right and do all those types of things, which is virtually a guarantee. So, you know, the Planning Board is charged with compliance with zoning, you know, dimensional requirements, stormwater. It's been vetted to the nines. And we have been consistent in what we have presented to all the boards for like nine months. So if you went back and looked at what we put in front of the entire town, it's the same plan.
No.
And the zoning was created with this plan as a reference. So from a zoning compliance, from a stormwater compliance, this has been vetted to the nines and has been consistent from our standpoint for over nine months.
He doesn't fully agree with your consideration.
I do have a note on the agenda that it due to...
So here's the...
Please come over that it has been approved and signed off by Conservation.
All right, the original order of conditions, signed by Conservation. I have two copies if you would like. Where's the, where's the original? We'll find the signature page eventually. Sorry for the time here. There's the original signatures. So, you know, at the last hearing, you know, some of the board members were actually ready to vote, but the majority of the board felt that it would be prudent to wait till the CONCOM acted and actually signed that, even though they had already voted to approve it. So I said, "Okay, that's fine, we'll go through that process." But we need to get moving. We need to get out of this.
Let's see.
It's not...
Boards waiting for other boards to act. You have your jurisdiction. We've satisfied things within your jurisdiction, and we're asking for a vote.
Right, the questions that we had for Mr. Brennan, Mr. Brennan came up too. There were questions for members of the board that he had and brought questions to you that he needed answers for. And I think the last two meetings, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the last two meetings, he sat here and said that they complied with all of the requests that Mr. Brennan had presented. Yes?
I was going to say, it may not sound popular, but what we just heard is absolutely correct. Can I finish without being interrupted, please?
I didn't interrupt you.
Yes, you did.
No, I just commented.
You don't have to comment either. The board is looking at zoning, and we overlap somewhat with Conservation in terms of stormwater management. Our charge is, does the site work as presented? The permitting process is something else totally different. They're going to apply for building permit. They're going to have to go through the process of getting sign-offs again from everybody for the building department. And if there's an issue with septic and they have to alter the plan and it isn't going to be exactly where it shows on the plan and/or if it affects the stormwater management, then it has to come back for review. And they're obligated to do that. And the zoning enforcement officer is the one who's in charge of doing that and forcing them to come back and take care of that. You know, our job is not to take, look at every single nuance of this project. And to the presenter's point, it has to start someplace. Everybody can't point to somebody else. The fact of the matter is, other than Conservation, and I agree that it would be nice to have the signatures that we now have from Conservation, only because we overlap with stormwater management. But as far as the rest of the site goes and the septic system, if that has to change from the presented plan, then it's up to the Border Health to work that out with the applicant. Then the applicant has to come back for a revised site plan, and we start a bit of the process over again. So I think we're do, I think we're on solid ground. Our charge is zoning and does it work? And we have evidence of both of those things.
Amy?
I would actually 1,000% disagree with you because the site plan application has that all of the boards send in all of their documents to us. So if you go to a Conservation meeting, for some reason, the chair is asking for all of the comments to come through his board. That's not true. So we have not, and I have talked to Border Health members, and they have not approved the septic system for this. We already have 266 that needs to come back for a site plan review due to the fact that they changed the heights, and they're still not approved on that either. So...
They changed the what? I'm sorry?
They changed the septic plan. It's going to be higher, and they've changed the site plan on 266, so that needs to come back for site plan modification. I'm simply here stating that Border Health has not approved it. There's problems with it, and they need to discuss it all. And I have gotten that directly from the Border Health, meaning the board. So, no, I'm not finished. So site plan states that four copies go out, I mean, all the copies go out to all the boards, and then all the boards send in all the documentation to us. For some reason, that's not happening here. And we already know that something's not being followed correctly in the office. And I actually know why. Because there's a couple people here trying to block information from happening. And I know that for a fact. And I just stated it here tonight. And actually, the fact that you said, "Brendan Elliott, did he text you and let you know you're not coming to the meeting right beforehand?" That's funny. So he knew, I didn't. So you're clearly doing something incorrect. And I know why, because you don't want my truth to be said.
Well, I'm sorry, but I don't think Brendan Elliott is required to notify you.
I didn't say that.
Notified the...
That's not what I said.
The chairman was notified. I don't know. Rick, do you have any opinion on this or your feelings on this?
Well, pretty much the same thing that Tom's saying.
Uh huh.
I mean, pretty much...
Nice try.
Everything looks good as far as our standpoint. You know, like they were saying, I mean, every single board keeps kicking the can down the road, and it's got to start somewhere.
We're actually supposed to gather all the information.
Did you have to meet with the, other than with the Border Health and the septic system? And it was, the height was changed or modified?
So you're asking about 266?
265.
265, we're in the process of going back and forth. There are no updated plans, so it's going, it's still in peer review.
So we should be hearing this from... We should be hearing this from the Border Health and not the other?
I don't know if I personally, you know, can see Mr. Millius's point. It's not our job to...
Yes, it is.
...motto to basically oversee what the other boards are irresponsible for. Again, if a modification or something is required, yes, it will come back to the Planning Board and it will be reviewed. But if you have nothing in writing as a, you know, requirement as such that...
Yeah. So I'll, I mean, the whole point is really, is the town protected to get what they have been promised? Right? That's kind of the whole, that's the main point of these boards, right? Is to protect the town from getting something different than what they've been promised, right? I can't think of a longer stretch where we have presented essentially the same plan to this board even before the town meeting that looked a lot like this. The major changes have been, we've actually reduced the number of bedrooms and we moved a wetland replication area from here to here. That's really it on this plan. It's been extremely consistent. So, and as you've stated, this is not our last permit. We don't get this permit and then, you know, build everything, sell everything, and then disappear. Every single structure that we want to build, we have to get a building permit. Your building inspector is your zoning enforcement officer. They need to check that we are in compliance with every single permit, bylaw, building code that exists before he'll issue anything. So we can't get to go until we're, until there's a double check on a second set of eyes checking all of our permits, plus all the things that are specific to the building inspector. So I just wanted to, you know, the point is...
Have you had any discussions at all with the Border Health?
With the Border Health? Yes.
Yes.
So I mean, we, so last night, we were in front of the Border Health for 266. Again, not the topic for this evening. They didn't have any specific comments on our plan. They were satisfied with all of the, you know, peer review was satisfied with everything that we've done. The agent was satisfied, but the chair was not, had not reviewed the plans in advance of the hearing. So they asked for additional time to review the plans.
Specifically for the septic system?
Yes, well, that's their jurisdiction.
Right.
Is the septic system. So that's what they focus on, you know, is the septic system. They're not concerned about things like building heights or setbacks to property lines, things that are part of, you know, this board's jurisdiction. So that's where 266 stands.
Mr. Millius?
I think Ms. Trup actually made my point. Not that we're talking about 266, but if there is a change, I, I'm under the impression there is going to be a change in the elevation of the septic system. Is that correct?
Yes.
To my point, they're coming back for site plan alteration.
Yes, and again, the process that I'm used to is, we start with the building inspector. We show him what the differences are. He makes a judgment call as to whether this thing is so tiny, like we're moving a shrub afoot, that it's not, you know, pertinent to come back to the board. Or if it's substantial, then he says, "Oh, you need to go back to the board for either minor or major modification." And we follow, we follow his lead. So that's the process that I'm familiar with.
I just wanted to make the point that if there is an alteration, it has to come back to the board.
Well...
And we're not talking about 266 in any of it.
No, we're not, but it's an idea.
If that's any substantial change with, not specific to just this application, any substantial change that happens from residential to all the way up, if there's a substantial change different than what was presented or whatever, it has to come back, whether it be to zoning or to planning or that. And that is our process, if I understand that correctly.
And that is the responsibility of the zoning enforcement officer.
Our responsibility, that is right here on an application in writing, and I'm not making up anything, I'm not trying to sugarcoat anything. I'm reading right from a Halifax document. It states, "Applicants shall submit an original and nine copies of their site plan to the Planning Board, who shall give the applicant a dated receipt. Within four days, the secretary shall retain one copy and transmit one copy to each: the town clerk, the board of assessors, the board of health, the building inspector and zoning officer, the conservation commission, the fire department, highway supervisor, and the water commissioner, and written notice of availability of a plan to the police department." And this is so that each board here will then, within 30 days, give us their comments. It's funny because they're not giving them to us. Conservation is asking for them to go to them. So it's an interesting thing that they just want to wave it all off. But we are actually sitting here, making sure that the site plan goes through all of these boards, and we are the final checkpoint. And that's what's been missing from this process, is that we're the ones who are supposed to sign off after everyone else does. And that is, and that's exactly why, you know, they didn't want me here tonight.
That is so incredible.
Right, that's why you didn't email me.
Mr. Millius, you have the floor.
That doesn't even deserve any comment.
Oh, right. There's nothing to comment.
The boards have 30 days to comment if they have any comments. And this has been historic for 30 years, and I can attest to that. If they have a comment, we will get them. If they don't, they don't typically bother to send anything.
That's not true.
And nothing's true for you, I'm sorry.
Well, when I was acting chair, I got comments from all the boards.
We don't supervise the other boards either.
Exactly.
They review their own and have their own criteria. But we don't oversee the Border Health, the Planning Board, other Conservation, and even the building inspector for that matter. We review what's in front of us, what's on the application. And none of the thing that Amy just got through reading doesn't say anything about, "Okay, modifications can't be made along the way." So of course, and again, if the modification requires further review or it's substantial, then it is reviewed. But it wasn't like we went into this blind and just started signing on the bottom line on all of this. Mr. Brennan has attended how many of our meetings? And went item by item. I mean, it started out with something like 20 or 30, maybe even more.
I think he's been at three meetings for this project.
And gone through each of the questions and point blank, as part of the minutes and on the recording, came up and said, "Yes, they complied with every question or thing that he wanted a specific answer to or had to be changed." Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, he sat there and told us that.
And stormwater is also part of the jurisdiction of the CONCOM under their Order of Conditions.
Right.
So he reviewed it for this board. He also reviewed it for the Conservation Commission under the Order of Conditions. And he's going to do the same review a third time for the stormwater permit for the Conservation Commission. So it's been looked at, and, you know, from, and each board has allowed them, has been allowed to instruct him to look at any particulars to that board.
So on here, part of the application is that existing and proposed site drainage is part of what we need to have a checklist for. So the reason that we have the checklist is so that everything comes together and then at the final stage, we sign off based on all of the other boards signing off.
Where's it say that, Amy? If we sign off, we sign off after the approval of every other board. It does not say that.
It only makes sense.
Well, again, that's my point. It does not say that. You just made that up.
No, I did not.
It doesn't. You just said it doesn't say that.
Why would it say all of the requirements of what needs to be on a site plan? Just to have them there, but they might not be tagged, and they might not be signed on?
It's a checklist that everything to be submitted. Everything that was on there was submitted by the applicant. What's that?
Who do you work for?
I don't work, I don't work for you. Okay? Bottom line, they have a checklist to start off. They've complied with that as far as my own personal concerns are. We had Mr. Brennan here at three different meetings, going through item by item by item as far as the responsibilities of this board. And again, we don't supervise or we don't approve or neither do the other boards require our approval. That's on their own. We only can go by what's in front of us. And again, if there is a substantial change or a modification that needs to be done, it's perfectly within their rights to certainly come and do that and prove to the Planning Board as far as what we're, items we're concerned with meet that criteria. So that's what I feel we should be voting on, is what our duties are and what is presented by. I don't think, you know, again, you know, making up criteria and rules and regulations that aren't part of our duties have nothing to do with the Planning Board or should be subject to our approval or denial for that matter. Mr. Millius?
And again, I just want to reiterate, you know, the applications, the building permit application goes to the building inspector. The building inspector in this town and most every town rots through all the applicable boards to get verification again that nothing has changed since their original plan.
Oh, do they, Mr. Millius?
Yeah, they do.
Right.
He is the zoning enforcement agent, as they well have stated.
Well, I would highly disagree because that means that all the other boards need to make sure that the site is exactly how it ought to be so that we then are the final checklist to check off. Because I did not see that the Border Health needs to send the septic system over to all the other boards to figure it out.
Because it has nothing to do with our board. It's the septic system. It's the Border Health. It's Conservation.
The site plan gathers all the information.
It has nothing to do with us.
The site plan gathers all the information so that this board can make sure that every other single board in town does what they're supposed to.
No, that's not our job.
Yes, that is our job. Okay, so we'll just say the site plan looks good because somebody says so, but then all the other changes happen and we're going to send them in.
If that was the case, we could eliminate Conservation. We could eliminate the Border Health and just put it all on the Planning Board. And that's not our job. You may want it to be our job, but it's not our job.
I'm sure everybody will see what's happening here and understand.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, I think so too. I agree. That was something you and I agree on.
Oh, they're going to know. They always talk to me about it.
Of course. Listen, you want a pulpit, you've got a pulpit. This is not the place to be going over that kind of stuff.
Right.
We have a responsibility. We have put...
Right.
You can make it up as you go with all you want.
I think we should open up to public comment.
Public comment for what?
This is not a hearing.
It's not a hearing.
I think that there's people here that need to talk.
About what? About what our duties are as the Planning Board?
Who do you work for again?
Who do you work for?
I work for the people of the town of Halifax. Clearly, you don't.
Well, listen, you know...
We don't want to talk to the residents? But we'll push this through, knowing that something's not agreed to.
The people of Halifax spoke. The people of Halifax voted for the overlay district. You...
On December 14th during, and you know what? Tom, we'll go back to this again. We should have had another hearing because it was not the, it was not a unanimous decision of the Planning Board. We asked for changes as a unanimous board.
No.
Yes, we did.
No, that's not true.
Again...
That is not true. You're making this stuff up right at the time.
Watch the meeting.
It was a unanimous vote. You tried to change your vote because your constituency didn't like your vote.
You closed the hearing.
And then you illegally tried to put it on the agenda. But you won't admit to that.
Yeah, I will. I did try to put it on the agenda because there was a changed bylaw that we were supposed to have a hearing. So yeah, of course I tried. I'm a member of this board. You blocked it, sir. Told me I was the princess of Halifax and I'm a spoiled rock rat.
Now you're making that up.
That's not true.
That is absolutely not true.
Tom, I have it on record.
Please, you've been telling everybody I'm a criminal. So back that up someplace.
Okay.
You know? You want a pulpit, you've got a pulpit. You have a constituency and you want to be the brave person to save everybody. Our job is what our job is.
Our job is to watch out for the residents of the town.
No, you want them to think you are.
Wanting to think you are, the site plan should remain open until the Border Health is done.
I disagree.
Of course you do.
It's not our job.
Yes, it is. All of this stuff creates the site.
If the, if the...
Yeah, well, as you know. What did you do on Mont Ponce Street and you didn't care? So let's listen to you.
Please, please, keep making stuff up.
Oh, right. Everybody knows.
Yeah, oh yeah. Everybody knows because you keep telling lies to everybody.
Well, I think it's important to, I think it's important to, the applicant knows that if the Border Health approves it or does not approve it or is going to require modifications, it's within their purview to require them and for you to show that. Again, as far as what was presented on the site plan with Mr. Brennan and the peer review, the 30-some-odd points, I think it was at least 30, you know, they went through it, required the answers to. On two out of the three occasions, was point blank asked if they met them and were satisfied with the proposal and how it was drawn and written. We paid an awful lot of money for his peer review and his professional opinion, so...
We didn't pay it?
Well, it was paid.
The applicants paid.
Right.
So I think there's residents here, obviously, so you're going to ask if anybody has anything to say?
It's, this is not a hearing.
It doesn't matter. It's a public meeting.
Yes, it is. The public hearing was closed. There was a motion and a second, and it was closed.
Now, this is continued.
So this is a process of how the board is going to vote.
That's incorrect.
So that's, that's... Unless somebody else feels different, we know Amy feels different. Anybody else feel different?
The applicant has asked us for a vote. I think they deserve a vote.
Clearly, that's who you work for.
I work for them. You'd better start backing some of this stuff up, young lady.
Rick, how do you feel on it?
I just feel it's, you know, like you said, you know, they've addressed everything Pat commented on. He's the one that determines if it's right. I mean, I don't see any problem with it at all. I mean, as far as, like we've been saying, the Board of Health and everybody else, that's not our jurisdiction. I mean, just because we approved the site plan doesn't mean that it's a slam dunk and it's just gonna fly through with everybody else. We still have to deal with them, just like you said. The, you know, if the Board of Health changes something, it has to be changed in the site plan, then they have to come back. But for now, I think everything looks fine just the way it is.
Right, and if changes are made, they're required to do the modifications and come back to the board to notify them of such. And then if it's a substantial change or modification required, then just as the applicant had said, it opens the process.
Because these other boards, I don't want to give their, you know, they're okay until they know the Planning Board's okay with it first. That's the way it's been since I've been on the board. They want the planning, we're like first in line, they want to make sure the site plan is good, and then the ball rolls from there with everybody else. That's what I've always been that, I have the impression of.
Because nobody wants it, that's why. Nobody wants this.
Nobody wants what?
Nobody wants this, that's why nobody was voting on it.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Nobody wants it, that's why it's going everywhere. Nobody wants to make the vote.
I'm ready to vote.
None of us want it.
Can I make a comment before you guys vote?
Could you give your name, yes, I'll take your comment.
Okay.
Your name and address, please.
My name and address, my name is Bruce Minor. I live C two dash five, Life Point, the condominium complex right next to this. So, I'm an original owner, I've been there over forty years. And we have had a water table problem there since day one. We've spent tons of money on trying to fix it and whatever, but there's been a water table problem there forever. So, my one question would be, at fifty thousand gallons every six months, which is what you get billed for, that's the minimum you get billed for, is a hundred thousand gallons per home, per year. That's like eight million gallons gonna go from that tank into the ground right next to us. So, I was wondering if maybe there could be a fund put aside where the builder puts a substantial amount of money. Right now, our condo unit is going for three hundred thousand, three hundred thirty thousand, which to me is bizarre, but that's beside the point. That makes our complex worth thirty-five to forty million dollars. If we get flooded out by this, who pays for that? Are we gonna have to go after the town? I think it's, I think it's, I think it's something the town has to think about. I think there should be money put aside, maybe five million dollars or ten million dollars into a fund that the town holds for ten years before that place gets built. Because you can't send a hundred and fifteen homeowners out because all of a sudden we have, that, that eight million gallons of water that's gonna go from that water tank is, in one form or another, it's all gonna end up in the ground over there.
And this, Mr. Minor, it has been an issue, we had hearings on it and whatnot, and was addressed by the applicant, and it was even, not a, like you said, this is, this is two sixty-six, two sixty-five, when even statements were made that it's wetlands across the street when, when in fact, when you check with the Board of Health and check with them, there are no wetlands over there, it's all uplands, on opposite side of the street, not on yours. But just because there was a puddle there, but in the same breath, Bruce, that's beyond our scope. It's beyond our scope of the Planning Board. You know, just because, you know, some people think everything should, you know, come through certain criteria and be checked out, it's, I don't think, unless, it's not part of our duties, it's not.
So, have they, have they?
So, have you addressed it with the Planning Board, with the Conservation and addressed the water situation with the, with the Board of Health?
Have you done a study on that, on that? Like, which, I was told by my grandfather, who was the highway surveyor in Halifax for over thirty years, that the water, underground water flows from
Right.
that property to the Mon Ponsett.
Right. And I understand, it's all delineated, the wetlands and whatnot, and, and the stormwater management and whatnot. That study, it all had to be done, Mr. Brennan presented all the facts and whatnot to us, and it was addressed by the applicant. So, I mean, if it, if the Board of Health or if the Conservation wants to take your suggestion, may mention to them what's setting up some kind of fund, I guess, you know, that's something you could bring up with them. But again, the same person that did the site replan review, Mr. Brennan, he was the one that basically brought up any concerns, which were addressed as far as we were going.
What is Mr. Brennan?
What's his position?
What?
What's his position?
Yeah, what's his qualifications?
He's a special civil engineer.
He's a civil engineer.
Who was hired by the town, funded by the applicant.
After being requested by the last.
So, it seems like a wetland scientist?
So, there's also a wetland scientist that works for this, for the Conservation Commission that helps review that part.
And isn't it funny that at two sixty-five's Conservation Meeting, Ecosystems wasn't there?
Okay, so, if I could speak further.
Yes, sir.
Would the Chair like me to kind of respond to some of the concerns of the resident?
Absolutely, I, no, thank you. I appreciate it. I believe the water and everything has been addressed.
Yeah, that's correct. Full study has been done for the hydrology for the site.
What is the Verna Pool Study?
Excuse me.
What is the Verna Pool Study?
Sorry, let me finish, please. It showed that we are reducing the amount of flow leaving our site in all the directions. It's a requirement from the state based on the stormwater management standards that we're not allowed to increase flow going off of our site. We've met that and gone beyond that. That has been verified by Pat Brennan, PGP Engineers. He's a civil engineer with thirty-plus years of experience. It was selected, he was selected by the town, he's worked for the town in the past, he reviewed it, we're required to pay for him so it doesn't become an additional expense of the town. That's because we're bringing the application in front of the town, so why should the town have to incur additional expense? So, that's, that's a little bit of that explanation of the process, if that's how.
I have a question for you.
PG engineering was, in fact, was recommended and was picked by the town.
So, you're saying that eight million gallons is not gonna leave your property? 'Cause I can guarantee that anyway.
I will add to that.
Will you please let him speak and stop interrupting me?
Well, no, Amy, he's.
Okay, you can interrupt him, but you can't interrupt him.
No, 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 I may answer a question.
He is handling the septic and the water flow, the amount of water flow, it's all been calculated, Bruce, and as far as this site is concerned, the water is being handled, the runoff, and Mr. Brennan has, has approved the site work done on the property.
Okay, so, and that's great.
Is it a lot of water? It's yours a lot of water. Yes, it is.
It's been addressed, okay? And there's been a study done, okay? Again, we have a hundred and fifteen homes in there, forty million dollars, and what if they're wrong?
I have something.
Well, anybody, I mean, anybody, sure, that's why we hire engineers to do this, 'cause beyond the scope of what we could figure out, you know, you say a hundred and fifty thousand gallons or whatever, but yes, this engineer who was hired besides their own people to design these things, I mean, you could say that about anything, you could say that about everything, you know, what if you're wrong, what if you're wrong? We have to, we've used him in the past for God knows how many years, and we rely on his judgment because he's an expert. It's not like it's just.
If there were five houses going in on that property, I wouldn't even think of that. But this is an unnatural thing because we're going three stories high. And it seems to me as though when you go three stories high, you no longer have an acre land for a well and a septic system, an acre land and well and septic system, you're going up.
So, what do you need for three stories of all those apartments? Do you know what the numbers are, what you need for septic? That's what we rely on this man for, to tell us what we need.
To me, it sounds like a project that we put in a town that has town sewage, and we do not have town sewage.
Well, it sounds like, and the only other thing we can go by is what the experts tell us. And it's beyond, it's beyond the scope of anybody on the board as to how to handle that kind of water, and that's why they hire people that handle that kind of stuff. You have to rely on somebody's.
My guess is that this, if this goes wrong, that this project will end up forcing the town to have town sewage.
Well, if it's wrong, Amy, yes?
I will let you know that stormwater management does not include the seventy-two apartments flushing of toilets, sinks, both in your kitchen and your bathrooms, not your showers, none of that, not your dishwasher, not your washer and dryer. It was actually flat-out stated by the PR engineer at the last Conservation Meeting. And if we go back to March and I can get back to you on the date at a Conservation Meeting, it was actually asked by the applicant to have PGP do the engineering.
But they could be wrong also. So, you know, what if they're wrong? What if they're wrong? And you're absolutely right. So, little lady, you gotta rely on your experts.
I think, I think there needs to be a fund put aside in case there's a problem.
Well, that's something you could certainly bring up, I don't know, something like that. I wouldn't even know how to, what would be required for the process to do something like that, if something you want to look into, my, I would suggest speaking with Mr. Cody Haddad, the Town Administrator, if something was that.
I'm not real familiar with the way that whole, this whole process works, but I'm guessing that you guys are gonna take a vote and, and suggest to the other boards that this is good for you? Can you put that?
No, no, we're not suggesting that at all. What we're suggesting is by our vote, is that what's been presented to us meets the requirements.
And can you add in there that you, that?
No, it's beyond our scope, Bruce. You, we don't have the power to do that.
No, it's not.
That's not our job.
That's not true.
It's not our job.
We can make any conditions whatsoever on a project, and this right here is all the things that we need to make sure of. So, one of the things we need to make sure of is that the existing and proposed topography is correct. We need to make sure that the location of water supply and wastewater disposal facility is correct, and so far, we don't have the Board of Health currently with an approved plan, and therefore, the site plan could change. So, we right here are the ones who are not supposed to vote till all of these things are done. Not to say that we have to.
That's not true. That's not true.
Right, so the requirements of a site plan are right here, so we just have to have like some sort of like monopoly type thing going on here. We'll just have like a game of life on here, and this looks good as opposed to this, but we won't have anything be concrete voted by all these other boards so that they can say, yeah, we're not gonna change anything anymore, this goes okay. And that's why we're here, is to make sure that the checklist is checked off by all the other things so that we're not going back and forth. That's what's going on here. That's what's supposed to happen.
Didn't we approve Starbucks with no septic system?
I did not.
We did, but the board did, the board approved the site plan.
Liddell, Liddell, with the stormwater management, there's videos of water just gushing down Holm Street. So, then all this happens. Like you said, there's conditions, and then there's lack of conditions. We do the best we can and with the, with what the bottom line, with what our responsibilities are. So, that being said, I'm sorry, we kind of interrupted you. If you, is there anything else on the site plan that you wanted to show us?
No, I think I'm done.
All right, I'm gonna ask for a motion, the pleasure of the board to do it with, on the application twenty-four SPR two forty-six for two sixty-five Mon Ponsett Street. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
You're gonna close the hearing?
There's a motion, the hearing's been closed. The public hearing's been closed.
You want to close it again?
Close it again.
Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second? There's a motion and a second on the floor to close the hearing for twenty-four SPR two forty-six before we vote. All those in favor, I'll take a, I'll take a voice vote. Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy?
No.
Passes three to one. Okay, now I'll accept a motion on the application for two sixty-five Mon Ponsett Street, twenty-four SPR two forty-six, doing my process, two forty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the application.
As presented.
As presented.
Without conditions?
Without condition, as presented. It's as presented. There's been conditions, and there's been changes, and there's been upgrades, and there's, and everything else.
And as we've discussed, if there's a change from another board, it has to come back for revision.
Hold on one second.
So, there's a motion, no, hold on, there's a motion on the floor, and then it's been seconded.
See what happens.
All those in favor, I'll ask for a voice vote. Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amy?
Absolutely no.
It passes three to one. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
What happened with the Verna Pool? They have a Verna Pool, it's actually at the Registry of D's, did you know that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you did? Nice job.
It's been covered.
All right, let's move on to the bills. That's next on our agenda. The PGP Engineering invoice three sixty B, three sixty C, D totaling one thousand three hundred and two seventy-eight.
That is correct. Invoice number three sixty B and three sixty three and three sixty D totaling thirteen hundred and two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Move to pay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to pay the invoice as just stated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
And. And as far as the minutes go, again, I was not emailed them, so therefore, I'm gonna ask that they push off into the September fifth meeting, the regularly scheduled meeting.
It's fine.
I have a letter here from Danielle showing that the minutes of seven eleven twenty-four were sent to all of the members with one attachment to eighteen eighty B, the Planning Board minutes of seven eleven, this is a copy, and also from Danielle saying that she had mailed them out equal by email for the minutes of eight one twenty-four, for the same thing with one attachment for the Planning Board minutes of eight one.
Oh, thanks.
So, I mean, there it is, so it's either, so somebody's mistaken, I guess, but let's call it a mistake.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I believe I left the original order of conditions.
I'm gonna take these, I'm sorry.
I need to, I just, I'm sorry, I need to record this, so.
I'm gonna take them so that I can read these. And I will make motion to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of July eleven, two thousand twenty-four?
I'll move that.
Do I have a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the meeting of July eleven, two thousand twenty-four as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll ask for a voice vote. Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Amy?
Obey.
Passes, three to one, good night. All right, the, also on our general, the meeting minutes of August first, two thousand twenty-four, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Again, Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Amy?
Obey.
Passes. Our next scheduled meeting here is September fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Unless anybody has anything else, minutes, bills. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And a second? A motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you very much.